Wonderful. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Policy Committee and the packed Public Gallery, which outnumbers the opposition members present thus far. Anyway, declarations of interest, do we have any? No, wonderful. On to the minutes of the last meeting, pages five to 10 in the pack. Any comments on those? No, can we agree them as a correct record? Wonderful. I'll sign them in due course. Item four petitions and questions, none received. So we're on to item five, Article Four modification, and I have James Crosby, Assistant Director, to present.
Thank you, Chair. And apologies from Mark Waringham, who's the report author. He's out doing local plan consultation event this evening. So the Local Planning Authority has the powers to make a direction removing specified permitted development rights within a defined area, known as an Article Four direction. The council made a non-immediate Article Four direction on the 10th of November 2021 with a view to removing certain permitted development rights for new residential dwellings across the town centre, district and local centres, core employment areas and a number of other commercial areas. The non-immediate Article Four direction came into force on the 15th of November 22. The Secretary of State has powers to modify or cancel the Article Four direction at any point before or after it comes into force. And the Secretary of State used their powers to modify that direction in October this year. And the modified direction came into force on the 3rd of November. The modification incorporated reductions suggested by officers in supplementary evidence, as well as further reductions, which excluded areas justified only by poor air quality or noise disturbance. Whilst that further reduction is clearly disappointing, the direction still offers an improved set of controls for the council. The report recommends that the modification is noted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Assistant Director. councillor Lang?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Assistant Director, and thank you to Officer Waringham, that's put a lot of work in on this. I hope that he's working hard steering the local plan update through this evening. Sorry if I repeat some of the stuff that Assistant Director has said, but I'm gonna do a little statement to the Tory opposition. Oh, no, and a single green in front and obviously all the people watching tonight, which is zero and zero. And obviously, we have Evelyn from CAC in the audience. So as Assistant Director said, this is a report to note this information. There was no chance to appeal it. I mean, Secretary of State stated when we looked at maybe appealing it, legislation around the Secretary of State's powers regarding the modification is extremely light touch. And basically, they can do what they want. So we saw this coming. So permitted development since its introduction in 2013 has lost us the potential for up to 600 affordable homes, three and a half million pounds in affordable housing contributions, and up to 4 million for transport and other infrastructure contributions. As we will see in Q2, the performance planning fees have dropped and obviously permitted development has a knock on to that as well. Our residents will know examples of substandard development under PDR, whether that be the large commercial residential, commercial to residential, or just poorly converted flats to bedsits. This Article Four direction in particular was mainly aimed at top hatting and commercial to residential, didn't really pick up the HMO stuff. In the summer, the Minister of State for Housing and Planning said that she was minded to modify, reduce or cancel altogether the Article Four direction, I believe it was Rachel McLean. The new Secretary of State as from the 13th of November was Lee Rowley, or Lee Rowley, however you pronounce that. Bearing in mind, this has already been amended in the consultation and steer from D look and with consultation with RBC planning offices and at Stiff and Deluc, they'd reduced it from the original Article Four by some 77%, 482 hectares down to 111. And the Secretary of State was again looking for a further reduction of 11 hectares down to 100. And she said it was primarily to do with areas that were to do with noise, noise and air quality, if it was solely that. So we've ended up with an Article Four direction, which has now been confirmed, which is some 21% of the original Article Four area. Now on for the positives. We have an area of land which still covers 1 million square metres, 100 hectares. Our proactive approach and dedication from officers has made sure the council has still managed to protect more of its areas, including core employment areas and commercial space that many other councils with similar Article Four areas have failed to do or not been as successful as us. The Article Four directive was never about stopping development. This council promotes sustainable development through the planning framework. For me, it's about upholding the integrity of the planning process, which is a vital part of the democratic process. We councils must retain the ability to insist on behalf of our residents, developers build suitable homes and contribute to local infrastructure. I was gonna leave it on that positive. But I read today in The Times that Michael Gove was again playing politics with housing, people's homes, building by scrapping the homes assessment. This is purely to basically satisfy the Tories and the Tory shires. He said that he would, where was it? Go as expected to prioritise brownfield and higher density inner city urban areas. Well, what have we been doing over the past decade but concentrating on those urban areas? So this will put more pressure on to the urban areas to provide the badly needed homes and lift the pressure from the Tory shires coming up to the election. They're playing politics with construction and planning. And I'm quite disappointed because I have a fair bit of respect for Michael Gove. And I don't believe it's come from him. I think he's done very well with the social housing white paper. And after the tragedy of Grenfell, and he's really empowering tenants, not so much for the private tenants. Well, I think there's work to do and hopefully the Labour government will sort out those issues. So to the committee, I say to note this report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Lang. Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. I thought the Green Party were the main opposition in Reading. I didn't realise we were the only opposition, but one was, apologies for that. So yeah, I'm not going to repeat what councillor Lang has said. I need to say that, yeah, disappointed by the loss of affordable housing, disappointed that this has been reduced and then reduced again. And it's a shame that the Conservatives aren't here to explain to us why this has happened and what they're doing to stand up to the government. Yeah, we'll be supporting this.
I do think the permitted development rights are a real travesty, actually. They fly in the face of the local democracy in the planning system. They result in substandard dwellings. They are the slums of the future. I think it's a scandal, really, as councillor Lang was kind of framing it. But the real travesty, I think, is how unaware the public are around some of this and kind of, you know, completely unaware the office blocks next to them can be easily turned into substandard accommodation thanks to the permitted development rights that the Conservative government have brought in. I don't necessarily share councillor Lang's moderate affection for Michael Gove, I have to say. Councillor Lang, you indicated?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to come back on the point, you know, maybe this is a backhanded compliment from the Secretary of State, you know, and she recognised that she was basically picking, she wanted the bits that were solely on air quality and noise. On noise, maybe she recognised the excellent policies that councillor Ennis is putting forward to improve air quality across the town. And maybe she thought they won't be needed in the future. So thank you, Chair.
I think we all know that's highly unlikely to be the reason that they went forward with these things. However brilliant councillor Ennis's policy proposals are. Right, not detecting any dissent. I'm assuming we're all happy to note this report. Wonderful. Takes us on to item six. We have two presenters. We've got Darren Carter online and we've got Gavin Hanford in the room. I shall go to the Director of Finance first, I think. Over to you, Mr Carter.
Thank you. So this report presents the finance and performance monitoring as at 13th of September 2023. There is a forecast adverse variance of almost 3.7 million pounds on general fund revenue. Now, this is an improvement of just 120k from quarter one, but that small movement includes an increase of almost 1.2 million pounds in the forecast overspend on brighter futures for children, with the total forecast overspend for BFFC now standing at more than 7 million pounds, including a 6.5 million pound pressure on the placement costs. Another area of ongoing concern is the impact of the cost of living crisis on the homelessness budgets. This is a demand-led service and with private sector evictions steadily rising, the number of families in emergency accommodation has been rising since April 22. The total number of singles and families being supported in April 22 was 71, rising to a total of 113 in September 23. We're also seeing high inflation pressures with the average nightly rate in April 22 being 90 pounds compared to 121 pounds in September 23. One piece of good news is that the capital financing budget is reporting a positive net variance of 2.2 million pounds, including a forecast saving of 1.8 million on the interest payable budget arising from a combination of the movement on the capital programme following internal review by the Capital Programme Board and the council's strategy of maximising internal borrowing, supported by temporary borrowing where required in order to manage the council's cash flow. Non-delivery of previously approved MTFS savings continues to be a concern, with only 42% of these savings currently showing us on track to be delivered. Total general fund sundry debt as at the end of quarter two is 8 million pounds compared to 7.9 million pounds at the end of quarter one. Council tax collection rates are marginally behind the collection levels at the same point last year. Now, collection rates for last year ultimately ended up being only 0.1% behind pre-COVID levels. So the current forecast is that collection rates will continue to improve over the remainder of the year. However, this will continue to be closely monitored in light of the ongoing cost of living crisis. National non-domestic rates are ahead of both pre-COVID and 22-23 collection rates. And the expectation is that this position will be maintained over the coming months. Following a fundamental review of the capital programme, this report proposes reducing this year's programme down by 40 million pounds and recommends violence to existing schemes to pull together the full scheme budgets for the two major levelling up fund projects. The reprofiling that has been done is important for a number of reasons. Firstly, it's important to be realistic about the scale of investment that we have capacity to deliver. And secondly, it will help to reduce the forecast capital financing budget requirements for 24-25. The approved housing revenue account budget assumed a drawdown from HRA reserves of 2.5 million pounds this year. At quarter two, the forecast revenue outturn position is a net positive variance of 0.45 million pounds. Therefore, the drawdown from HRA reserves is forecasted just over 2 million pounds rather than the original budgeted 2.5 million. Finally, the report details a range of amendments to the HRA capital programme that will result in a net reduction in plant spend this year of almost 3 million pounds. So Policy Committee is asked to note the contents of this report and to approve the general fund and HRA capital programme amendments in recommendations nine and 10, and spend approval for the local authority housing fund as per recommendation 11. And I'll pass over to Gavin now to take you through the performance section of the report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So Section 12 of the report provides a summary of the council's performance against the performance measures and projects included in our corporate plan. Full details of these can be found in annexes five and six. In relation to performance measures, table 16 gives you a summary of the current position. We have 57 measures in total for 2023-2024, and of those, 31 are annual measures. So we will not be updating those until the end of the financial year. The quarter one and quarter two performance figures therefore reflect the status of 26 measures that we update quarterly or monthly. Of those, 14 are rated green, meaning we are performing at or above target. Five are amber, meaning we are within 10% of our target, and seven measures are red, meaning that we are more than 10% off target. Therefore, against an ambitious set of targets, we are performing within 10% of the target or better for nearly three quarters of all measures. This includes repairing over 99% of actionable potholes within 28 days, recycling over 52% of all household waste, and providing rehabilitation services so that over 94% of people over the age of 65 who are discharged from hospital are still living at home 91 days later. However, there are still some areas where performance is not where we want it to be. The table on page 58 of the agenda pack sets out the detail of seven measures that are rated red alongside a narrative and the actions being taken by the service to get these back on track. In relation to corporate projects, table 18 provides a summary of the current position. There are 48 projects that we set out in our corporate plan. One of these projects to procure and implement crowdfunding solution is no longer proceeding, leaving 47 in the table. Of those, 24 are rated green, 23 are rated amber. There are no projects that are rated red. Thank you.
Thank you very much to the Director and the Assistant Director, councillor Terry.
Thank you, Chair. I have very little to add, really. I think, you know, it's clear from this report that we have some challenging things happening this year. I'd like to congratulate the council officers on their work on the recovery plan. As you can see, great efforts have been made to make sure that we're heading in the right direction, although it remains difficult. So really, I'm just happy to say that it's quarter two. We'll see what quarter three brings. Hopefully, we'll be moving further in the right direction towards the end of the year. And just to say that it's good news that we've actually been able to identify the funding to come forward to make sure that we're delivering the Hexgan studio and the Central Library replacement. Leave it at that, Chair.
Thank councillor Terry. Anybody else? Councillor White?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to reinforce what's been said, I guess, this is a fairly, yeah, well, thank you very much to the officers for the presentations. This is a fairly small recovery from a fairly large amount of time, looking at what can be done to recover the council's financial position. And the overspend is still fairly large. Only 42% of council savings either delivered or on track still sounds pretty bad to me. Brighter Future, up to 7 million pounds of overspend and 0% of their savings delivered still sounds pretty bad. I accept that times are tough, but these numbers don't fill me with confidence, I think it's fair to say.
I should say, I mean, it's a fairly big effort from RBC alongside a significant worsening of the situation in brighter futures that's really here. I mean, superficially, yes, I mean, you look at the headline figure, it does look almost the same as it was in quarter one. But beneath that, actually quite a lot of movement. And I think when you look into the detail of why the children's services situation is the way it is, and I should speak on it because councillor Hoskin couldn't attend tonight, so he's been replaced by councillor Barnett Ward's rucksack. That when you look at the detail of the brighter futures budget and the way in which children's placement costs are increasing astronomically, locally and across the country, even as the number of children in care remains relatively static, you get a sense of an entire sector that is in pretty profound crisis. And we do require the government to get serious around what we can do, because there are things we can do, of course. There are things that we might look to invest more over the longer term in creating more placements run directly by the council, for example, but we can't do those things overnight. We can't do those things in a quarter, certainly. But the situation is one of severe gravity right across the country. And we see councils screaming out for help around these issues. And we are lucky to be in a relatively robust situation here in Reading, that we are able to weather the storm better than some of even our near neighbours. And I'm sure we'll talk a bit more about it as we progress to the next item on the agenda. Did you want to comment, councillor Terry? Yeah, over to you. Yeah?
I think I just would want to say to councillor White, on top of what you said about brighter futures, and it's all external pressures. There's nothing that the council can directly do about that. And brighter futures has a contract. It is responsible for making sure that it tries to stay in its budget. But, you know, these external factors are significant. Now, in terms of the savings, I mean, I agree with you, but that it's challenging, but at this stage, actually, the 61% is actually where we're heading at this stage in terms of those that still might likely be achieved, which in the context of the current climate with interest rates and inflation and all of those things, is to me actually not that bad. And the other thing that I think we need to remember is that this has been a very prudent council for a number of years now. And if you care to remember that when the budget's built, we build in some contingencies about the fact that sometimes savings for very good reasons may not be as realisable as we might have thought at the time at which we set the budget. So I think the point here is, is that not to go scaremongering in any way. This is, you know, a financially sound organisation that is in control of the budget, no matter what the significant challenges might be at this point. So I'm not too disappointed. I can see what the external factors are. I can see that council staff responding really well in a timely fashion. And it does remain to be seen, we're only in the second quarter reporting, so we've still got two quarters to go. And I would want to suggest that we would be able to continue to manage the in-year pressures. And as you say, councillor Brock, nonetheless, though, it does present some further challenges as we look forward on the next item. Thank you, Chair.
Wonderful. Nobody else? So not detecting any dissent from the recommendations in the report? Are we okay to agree those? Yes, wonderful, unanimous. What more could you ask for? Takes us on to, and thank you to the Assistant Director, but I'll hold on to the Director of Finance for item seven, the medium-term financial strategy update. Over to you, Mr Carter.
Thank you. So this report updates members of Policy Committee on the latest forecasts for the medium-term financial strategy for the period 2024-25 to 26-27. Now, as we've just been discussing, the local government sector is experiencing a very difficult set of financial challenges at this moment. 12 Section 114 notices have been issued by council since 2018, declaring themselves effectively but not actually bankrupt, compared to just two over the previous 18 years. And Nottingham were the latest example a couple of weeks ago. Now, we know that some of these were the result of poor financial decisions. But what we're now seeing is councils struggling due to high inflation and rise in demand for essential council services. So I do want to emphasise the point that Reading Borough Council remains financially stable. However, we're not immune to these national pressures. So in the quarter two report, I identified particular pressures around children's social care placements and homelessness. And these both need to be addressed as part of the budget planning process. Now, as I speak, the provisional local government finance settlement has not been announced. It's expected next week. And so the funding figures in this report are subject to change. However, the Autumn Statement and the recent D look policy statement indicated that no new funding would be made available to councils to address these cost pressures. In this climate, the MTFS update only provides funding for cost pressures that are deemed as unavoidable, the most significance of which includes adult social care inflation, children's social care placement costs, homelessness and waste disposal costs. The MTFS currently assumes a general council taxing increase of 2.99% and an additional adult social care precept of 2% across all years of the MTFS. No announcements were made with respect to council tax referendum principles in the 2023 Autumn Statement. So these assumptions will be reviewed in line with any announcements made in the provisional local government finance settlement. The update assumes the business rates reset originally assumed to happen in 24-25 will not now take place until 25-26 at the earliest. However, realistically, given the lack of central government announcements and an impending general election, it's unlikely that the reset will be able to be implemented until 26-27 at the earliest. However, until further announcements are made and given the forecast scale of the impact on Reading Borough Council, it is considered prudent to assume at this point that the reset will occur in 25-26. Now, we may update that assumption ahead of the final budget report to council in February. The proposed service savings and efficiencies of 3.7 million pounds and additional income of just over a million currently proposed in 24-25 are set out in Appendix Two. Section eight of the report sets out the key planning assumptions used in this update. Table one identifies the forecast budget gap across the next three years. The estimated gap of 4.1 million pounds in 24-25 will need to be addressed in order to comply with the legal requirement to set a balanced budget. The report also updates forecasts for the housing revenue accounts. The rent increase for 23-24 was capped by government at 7%, which avoided rents being set at the standard CPI plus 1%. In this report, we've assumed, and in the absence of any indication from central government that a cap will be imposed this year, that we will revert to the standard CPI plus 1% rate, which equates to a total rent increase of 7.7%. So work has been undertaken to model the impact of a 7.7% increase across in the 30-year HRA business plan. The modelling includes expenditure to maintain our properties, creating new built properties and investing in low carbon investments in our council stock. Details of the capital programme update for 24-25 to 26-27 are set out in Appendix Four for the general fund and Appendix Five for the HRA. As I mentioned earlier, the Capital Programme Board has reviewed all capital programme schemes in respect of scheme deliverability with project managers and has re-forecast spending plans with the aim of right sizing the budget to match individual scheme delivery profiles and to address historic issues about reprofiling and slippage. At this stage, other than fully funded grant schemes and rolling programme schemes, no new capital schemes funded by borrowing have been added to the capital programme as this would result in an increased overall budget gap. The capital programme will be further reviewed in January following the local government finance settlement. Statutory and wider consultation based on the budget proposals contained in this report will be undertaken and following this committee and responses reported back to Policy Committee in February 24. Similarly, the impact of the local government finance settlement and the updated capital financing implications will also be reported to the committee, together with any additional saving proposals identified. Policy Committee at its meeting on 19th of February 24 will be asked to approve a balanced budget for 24-25 and the three-year MTFS and to recommend its adoption by council at the meeting on 27th of February 2024. Policy Committee is asked to note the contents of this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I think it should be an obvious thing that councils are not immune to the impact of high levels of inflation as we've seen. And when costs go up, it puts a pressure on our budget and it puts a pressure on our budget for next year as well. It's most obvious, of course, with social care placement costs, as we've already spoken about a bit tonight. But actually, any service we provide or any investment we make, any work we undertake, costs have increased throughout the supply chain and this has knock-on effects. But the other side to that high inflation is, of course, the cost of living crisis that people are suffering with. And during a cost of living crisis, it is unsurprising that people turn to their local council for further help and support, and that places a greater strain on services which are already suffering from the effects of high inflation. So when we look over the sort of MTFS period, I think, you know, setting a balanced budget for next year, okay, you know, it's a challenge. There'll be things, decisions that we have to make, but we'll do it. There'll be things, decisions that we have to make, but we'll do it and we'll set a nice balanced budget in February. But when one looks forward into years two and years three of the MTFS, this is where really we want far greater clarity from government and a finance settlement that perhaps, you know, arrives at some point before Christmas. I mean, we hold this meeting on this day because actually we would ordinarily have received, uh, the finance settlement by the start of this week and it gives time to do a little bit of analysis on it before we come here to have the MTFS update. But in fact, so far as we're aware, we'll receive it at some point next week, I think. I think the Director of Finance is predicting Tuesday, so maybe we'll be lucky. But if you look at the autumn statement and you look at what the Office for Budgetary Responsibility have done in terms of analysis of it, they are saying that over the coming spending period, the level of, uh, funding reduction that local authorities will have to shoulder is roughly equivalent to the kind of cuts we saw in the austerity years of 2010 to 2015. And this will be a monumental problem for public services up and down the country. So it's no surprise that, given that leaders, section 151 officers and, uh, and, and chief executives have been saying for years that councils are at breaking point, that we have seen so many councils actually reach the point of being broken. And that should be of great concern to us. By contrast, I'm very pleased that we have managed over the past three years to deliver 30 million pounds of savings and that our prudent financial planning, as councillor Terry was talking about earlier, allows us to be in a robust position relative to near neighbours and relative to statistical neighbours somewhat further away geographically. But we will have to continue looking for new savings, new efficiencies and new income in order to set balanced budgets over the years to come. And I suppose it remains to be seen whether or not government will take the opportunity in the provisional local government finance settlement to address some of these sectoral challenges. But the autumn statement and, uh, political statements that have been made thereafter suggest that they continue to have their head in the sand about it. Uh, so I think it's very concerning times, but I'm very grateful to the work that's been done by the finance team and by officers across the council, truly Herculean efforts in great many cases to produce possible savings to give us the ability to move towards setting a balanced budget for the next financial year. Anyone else? No? We're not detecting any, any, any dissent. I, I assume that we're all going to note the report as it is? Yes, agreed? No, no, it's fine, great, thank you very much. And that take, thank you to the Director of Finance. And that takes us then to the end of the meeting and thank you all for coming.